Thank you. Welcome, everybody. It is approximately 1:35 and this is our second meeting of the joint workshop with the Town Council Finance Committee and its staff along with the School Board's Finance Committee and their staff. For attendance, I'll just go through and recognize who we have present. On the School Board, we have the School Board's Finance Chair, Chris Ciasa, with us. Chairwoman Donna Beely and Christine Messingo. For their staff, we have Ms. Bolton from the Finance Department and Superintendent Dr. George Entwistle. For the Town Council, we have Counselors Bill Donovan, Counselor Peter Hayes and myself, Sean Baybine, present. And our staff, we have Tom Hall, our manager, and Ruth Porter, our Finance Director. So, everyone, welcome and thanks for coming to the second meeting. Just a high-level overview before I turn it over to the facilitation team. I believe, just to explain, my understanding is that Dr. Entwistle and Tom have agreed to kind of partner in the facilitation process and scribing for us. I do really appreciate that. So, today, the superintendent will actually help facilitate this for us so that we can have a conversation. And today's conversation really focuses on a follow-up from our last meeting in which we sent, set out, I want to say there were about 13 original basic understandings of what we wanted to look at in the budget process. And today's purpose is to talk about setting the norms for our working group and the principles of those norms. And then also start finalizing the budget process as far as the timeline and schedule. Then also firm up future dates for our meeting as well. So, we have a little bit of a task ahead of us and I know that Dr. Entwistle will get us through that very well. Even though it's not on the agenda, I did want to, we do have some guests from the public here, so I did want to open it up for a couple of minutes of public comments if anyone would like to speak at the beginning of the meeting. If you could, if you do, I just need to step up to the podium, just like a regular meeting. Not seeing any, we'll just move on and I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Entwistle.
Okay, thank you. Actually, Tom and I will be facilitating the meeting. My portion is Item 3, Establishing Norms and Guiding Principles. It's something that we do within the school district countless times with countless teams that are working on topics of varying levels of intensity and complexity. This is a very simple sample guideline for norm-setting. I will go through it real quickly and I will then ask you to do some independent thinking for about three to four minutes. So, as a group, in order to set some norms for operating meetings effectively and efficiently, generally, there's three to five norms that are selected that will cover just about any issue that might come up in the meeting. The other critical part is that these norms should be ones that are most essential to accomplishing this group's goals. We'll capture them and I will do the scribing today. The norms can be posted for each meeting or we can put it on the agenda. Tom and I can decide on that, but we'll have them available and present in the subsequent meetings. And they should be simply stated and stated in positive terms rather than negative terms. What I'd ask you to do is to take three to four minutes, take a look at some of these common norms. This is just pulled simply off the website that gives us a whole bunch of things to think about. And then you can see that there are some blanks there. In the blanks, what you could do is, I mean, you can do whatever you would like in terms of your own note-taking, but if there are some that particularly speak to you, you might want to circle them. And we'll work off, I will work off the sheet first and then I'll capture the other ones that might be different than what we have on the sheet here up front there. So, read through, see if anything particularly speaks to you. And there's also room at the bottom to add your own contributions. So, I'll just go quiet for three minutes. I said, three minutes is actually a long time. I think we've hit three minutes. I'm looking at my friend Catherine, who is a wordsmith extraordinaire. Are you all set with us?
I'm just, um, short.
I think having a sense of humor is always a good one. But I don't know if that's on the list. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to start with the ones that you've added to the list and then I'm going to take my seat again and we will go through the process of seeing if we can identify the critical elements that we want to add to the norms. What I'll do is I'll go around quickly. If you don't have anything to offer, you can just pass. If it's already up there, you can just let me know. I'll put a little check by it. You want to stop?
Sure. Transparency, avoid hidden agendas.
And we're not going to talk about these, we're just going to go around. Bill, did you have a new one to add?
I think I really liked all of these, I must say. But my perception of norms, I probably misunderstood one of the missions. I thought it was more one of the principles that are going to guide us in our work, the job of setting budgets. And so, I was thinking we'd have principles more like that the state's likely to cut the revenues that we're likely to receive this year, that we're at the end of a difficult recession period, that budgets have gone up in terms of dollars at a considerable rate in recent years. So, those are all things that would drive me towards judgments about restraint. But that's more the environment in which we work as opposed to the rules by which we engage with each other, which is different.
These are really more rules of engagement than they are assumptions.
Exactly. So, I don't have anything really specific to add.
Okay. But those are the assumptions.
Because I was thinking about it in a totally different way than everybody else's.
Assumptions will come in to play at some point in time. This is really more the operating protocol that we're going to use?
Yeah, so I'll cede my time to others.
Peter?
Actually, I have like four that are already on the list if we're going to come out.
Okay, we'll come back to those. This is anything that's not on the list. Ruth?
Now, you can have a say in, you know, to, after listening to each other, to start ourselves on each other's side of things, if you will.
Like role reversal.
Empathy or sympathy.
Oh, yeah.
That's a good one. How do you want to say?
So, if I were, I would rather look at the, try and look at it from the School Board's side and if I were a School Board member, I'd try to look at it from the...
Appreciate both, all perspectives.
Try on other perspectives.
Okay. Catherine?
I do not have a new one, but I had a collating thought, which is that as we're selecting the norms, I sort of saw them falling into different categories. First was sort of a climate and culture, the respect pieces and the listening pieces. Secondly, more operational efficiency, like the meeting on time ones. And then there are quite a few that are really more individual goals, I bring to the table the things that I think are going to help us move forward as a team, so, just an observation.
Perhaps you can hold on to that, those categories and we'll see if we can fit them in some way. Christopher?
I found five on the list that I'm quite content with.
Very good. Since we don't have norms right now, I can sort of give feedback. Donna? Ordinarily, if somebody else is doing it, I'm going to, no, 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 no feedback. Go ahead, Donna.
Um, I have three that I don't think are on the list.
I'll take one. Just, I'll take one of them and then we'll come around again very quickly.
Oh, okay. So, then I'll say that I think there needs to be a routine process whereby both groups share what was happening at this meeting with everyone else that's absent from this meeting, both sides.
Like a reporter.
We have a full Town Council, a full School Board, but they're not all here. How are they going to find out what happened here? What's going to be the process, I wish, that's delivered on both sides?
Okay, you're saying that everyone should follow, we should agree to a routine process to share the meeting outcomes with others. Christine?
I'm fine.
Happy? Tom?
Sense of humor, forgive me if that's on that list. Is it on there? I think that's a good thing for solving my...
Yeah, I think so, too. Actually, so, I apologize. So, transparency is actually already on that list. I didn't realize that. But the one that I have on my own, it's avoid territoriality. Territoriality. Think instead of the overall good for the community, our employees and the constituency, just because I serve on the council, I should not be, that's what I'm saying, I should not be also concerned with the schools.
Okay. Bill, you, Peter, did you have another one to add? This is going to go quick. No, Ruth, any others? Kate, we're back to you, Donna. I told you I'd come back.
So, present problems in such a way that promotes mutual discussion and resolution.
Okay.
You know, the manner in which the problem is presented.
So, say a little bit more.
Present problems.
Okay, no, just talk about it a little bit more, see if I can get it to three words.
So, the manner in which the issues are presented promotes mutual discussion and resolution and not confrontation or contention.
Okay, so...
We wanted it solved.
So, right, be problem-solving with discussion and resolution, right? Or something along this line?
Maybe another way of saying it, forgive me, Donna, if you're chugging in, is kind of a recognition of the wrongness together. We all need to get to that point. Yeah, kind of a courteous presentation, not the majority.
I think some of the lists allude to that, too.
Yeah, it was a, like, take...
Okay, problem solved with discussion and a focus on reaching resolution.
A virtue to mention, but to recognize and respect our differences.
Does that, is that not on that main list?
Probably is in one way or another.
Respect differences?
Of the two groups, you mean?
Or differences of opinions.
The difference has a very, has a bit of a difference. Different roles, responsibilities, that doesn't count.
It's almost like, it's almost like Ruth, earlier, you're appreciating all the perspectives and then you're all bound to question them. It does say listen to each other.
Right, and that covers a lot of ground.
I think he took Ruth's.
He stole his tip.
I think we zip all the ways back around again. I think we do. And then back to you with your third agenda.
I have mutual trust.
So, work with mutual trust. Okay, this is where it gets complicated because what you're going to do is you're going to pick six, okay? It can be any of these up here or any of the ones on your chart, okay? Prioritize the six that you think are most essential to getting our work done as a team here. Kate, could you do me a favor and just, can you write these for me?
So, are you looking one being the most important?
Under your board chart, in the right corner.
You can just pick six, and you think are most essential.
Oh, okay, you don't want them prioritized, then.
That's right.
Actually, you know what's easier?
I've already copied more or less what it is. I've got your stuff.
Actually, you know what would be easier is if you take my sheet and work off the main sheet there, okay? And I'm just going to, in the event that we need to change anything there. I'm going to, I'm going to just go with, has everybody got six? I'm going to go with a show of hands. If you have, if this is one of your six, raise your hand, okay? It is kind of like school. Sense of humor, one, two, three, four. Appreciate all perspectives. Raise them nice and high so I can see. Four.
Now, we're only going to vote for six plus all this list, right?
No, the list is included in your...
The list is included.
No, no, I know that.
Right, yeah.
You only get to put your hand up single time, so no double raising of your hands.
I just want to be clear, this is a very quick group.
Okay.
I can say that because the norms have not been established.
And humor.
And humor, and it was, it was an attempt at humor. Follow a routine process to share meeting outcomes. Yeah, I thought Donna, you might. No territoriality. Problem solved with focus on discussion and reaching resolution. Respect roles and opinions. Work with mutual trust. Are you all playing? Everybody feel, okay, you still have some left over. Presume that everyone is welcome and extend a welcome. Anybody? I don't know what that means. Be open to learning from one another.
That's true.
Up two?
Great.
Speak for yourself. One person talks at a time. Man, if I was voting, I would vote for that one.
Aren't you?
No, I'm not voting. I'm facilitating. I need to be objective. Ask questions, others may be wondering, too. Two. Honor the time schedule.
I'm retired.
I think the best are yet to come, then.
I'm tired, I can't carry a bunch of time.
I know. Participate actively. Ruth, tell me if you can see anybody that I'm missing. Maintain confidentiality. Come to work, come to the work with 100% of ourselves. In other words, effort and focus. Attend all meetings and be on time. Listen. Any? Listen to and show respect for the opinion of others. Here we go. One.
We have a winner.
Follow the agenda, stay on track. Ensure the credit is given to those to whom it is due. Both-side conversations during breaks or after meetings. Cell phones, pagers, all set aside in silent mode. Treat each other with dignity and respect. That's a big one. How many? Practice transparency, avoid hidden agendas. There we go. That's a big one. Be genuine with each other about ideas, challenges and feelings. Share complete information up front. Listen first to understand. Importance of listening. Good. Practice being open-minded. All right, the ones that are coming up on the chart are listen to and show respect for the opinions of others, treat each other with dignity and respect, practice transparency and avoid hidden agendas, listen to, listen first to understand. And we have bring a sense of humor and respect roles, opinions, roles and opinions, and also appreciate all perspectives. So, those are the, I would say, those are probably the seven. I have four over there, five, six, seven, right?
Some of it is somewhat interrelated, so.
Sure are.
Yeah.
Well, if those get boiled down into something, we pick some others, too.
If you would, if you would like to maybe suggest you deboil something, you can do it.
I think the seven are good to move forward. I mean, they're just guidelines, really, just to make sure that we're conducting ourselves in a respectful manner.
I think it's appreciate all perspectives and respect of roles, opinions of others. They're pretty similar and there's another one in here somewhere that's pretty similar. They've got a very high income.
Maybe, maybe the respect roles and opinions, the opinions is part of the perspective, but respecting the roles and responsibilities of each of the folks here. We all have very, you know, the board members have different roles and responsibilities than, than the council members, than does Tom Hall, than does the superintendent and so on. So, maybe that gets rid of that. We add responsibilities and get rid of opinions. Any other things you'd like to try to boil down? Kate brought up a good point and that was that in fact, there are some logistical things there, and some of the logistical things, I try to stay on time, do the agenda, stick to the agenda, those kinds of things. Do you want to revisit or suggest that we take out a logistical?
Especially, we shouldn't be doing that regardless.
Curious. I mean, that's my opinion.
Okay, so, we're going to...
We're opposed to it either.
It's called a positive presumption, that's, that we will, I'll do all that. And maybe we just revisit it if in fact there's some, some concern. That would conclude my norm fielding.
So, can you go over the list again, just the finalized list?
Yep. Listen to and show respect for the opinions of others. Treat each other with dignity and respect. Practice transparency, avoid hidden agendas. Listen first to understand. Bring to the table a sense of humor and appreciate that. Appreciate all perspectives being offered, perspectives and opinions, I guess, and respect the individual roles and responsibilities that we all have, given our roles. Well, that would be respecting roles.
We'll sort of prepare this list and send it around and George alluded to this fact, is it something we'd like to have printed on the agenda, we'll carry it with us throughout, just as a constant reminder?
Sure.
We'll find a way to just include it right on the agenda, so it's up constant reminder.
And once you write them all out, if you want to try and consolidate some of that, because there's at least, I don't think, you know, you ought to be repeating, respect one another's opinions and different perspectives. I think you could bring it all into one from two or three.
Will you, I mean, all of you, do a lot?
Right, yes. Don, don, don. We do a lot with Sunday.
Part A.
Thank you. Nice job.
So, Sean, are we ready to move on to item four?
Yes.
That's good.
To everyone else, are we ready to move on?
Yes. Okay. All right, just as a quick intro and perhaps to benefit Bill and Chris, who weren't part of the initial session, a quick background, you might recall, we put together three basic questions that we put out to the full Town Council and School Board. They were the same three questions. You all provided responses back to George and myself. And then we tried to synthesize those and understand what the commonalities were. And thankfully, there were a lot, a lot of crossover. And the last session was really devoted almost entirely to that, that process of understanding where those commonalities were. And before you this evening or this afternoon, we've provided kind of a, that compilation, the commonalities, if you will, and we've kind of characterized them as improvement suggestions. And for those here in the audience and those at home, I've just put together three quick slides here that just simply go over these and I beg your indulgence, if you'll, I think it's worth just kind of walking through them very quickly. Again, they're the same ones on that one sheet that I've provided you. You'd think I could. So, the first one was an overall sense that we should just have more joint sessions between the Town Council and School Board throughout the process. Under that, the notion that consistent meetings between the Finance Committees, that might be a more common occurrence. This is a great example of that. And of course, we've just gone through establishing the norms and guiding principles to work, work under and work with. The second kind of improvement suggestion had to do with budget presentation. That really being a joint presentation of the proposed budget. Historically, I simply fold in the school budget into my budget. I'm the one that makes the presentation and it's no more than kind of reporting the bottom-line numbers. There's no qualitative piece to that. And so, what you'll see in the next part of this conversation is George and I propose to collaborate on that presentation, so it's a more substantive and representative presentation of both sides of the budget. The other one has to do with status quo budget and new initiatives identified. That seems to be a pretty strong theme and interest to focus attention on the new stuff in the budget as opposed to the minutia of things that carry year to year that end up occupying a lot of time, but you don't have much control over. And then the other part of that is identifying major cost drivers. Next, some sort of open forum, town hall-style meeting with the public. And again, you'll see as we get into the proposed process and timeline, we're proposing to do just that. And that would take the place, fulfill the requirement of a public hearing. I think there's some logistical and practical challenges that this group might want to talk about, where and when and how we actually accomplish that so it's productive. But the notion being an opportunity for an open exchange of information, so we'd be as prepared as we can to field questions from the floor and answer them on the spot. And to the extent we can, we can certainly provide follow-up information. But I think we can be adequately staffed to do a fair job of that. So, again, questions asked and answered on the spot. That's something that's been really missed throughout the budget process. It's really kind of one-sided. A whole lot of conversation around long-term planning from a facilities point of view. I know the school's undertaken some of that work. We really want to encourage a five-year capital plan and I think some of that work can be folded into that. The town needs to follow suit there as well. And there's some conversation around multi-year budgeting, like the state does. And the last three bullets are kind of improvement suggestions, collaborative and joint goal-setting to identify the external impacts in the budget, the unfunded mandates are part of that conversation, and the related fees engaging the legislative delegation around those issues, and others, perhaps. But as it relates to budget, it's really those external factors pushed upon us by the state. So, in a nutshell, those were kind of boiled down. Those are the improvement suggestions. And with that in mind, George and I have put together a proposed process and timeline. And you should have in your packet there or not. Am I passing it out now?
It's the eight colors.
Yeah, it's the multi-colored calendar.
This is probably the one that you should go with, the one that I'm handing out now. It's got the disclaimer that it's...
I was going to say, you might be violating a norm by changing it without my approval.
The only difference is that it has a little label on it saying that this isn't a done deal, that it's...
But oftentimes, there are multiple copies of things, so that first one can really disreplace that.
Oh, yeah.
Dis replaces, correct. You can just rip, lift and throw.
So, just as we're bubbling through here, just a couple points to look at. This is obviously a six-month book. I hate to admit it, but that's essentially the budget process takes a six-month commitment. We have included the regular meetings of both the School Board and the Council, just so they're kind of on the calendar. They may, in most cases, they don't impact the budget process, but... They may, in most cases, they don't impact the budget process, but for maybe a first or second reading. But regardless, we've just kind of calendarized those so they're there, really so we can appreciate the other commitments that we have, frankly. And there's a, a number of different components that, I think I alluded to two of them. Those really being at the front end, on, we're proposing on April 1st, do a joint presentation. That would involve both George and myself, and perhaps our staff. I would expect that would be a more in-depth and a little longer. It might be an hour by the time we get through it, frankly, whatever time it takes. I will flag an issue for my, for the town council, that's proposed on a council evening. That would be the first meeting of April. Not talk to the council chair, but it's certainly possible that we do this at a six o'clock workshop. That's going to, you know, we've kind of fallen into that routine. It is possible to perhaps pull that back a week into the last four weeks of March, on the 25th perhaps. But I, the later, the better, frankly. Our information is better the later in the process we can get. And that's about the late, as late as I think I'm willing to even suggest. And so it's really a question whether we think we can accomplish this in, in an hour, and whether we should do it on a regular council night. So that's a, a point of discussion that maybe we can come back to. The other kind of real process change is, at the end of April, we're suggesting this town hall forum, again, intended to be an open Q and A session, where certainly members of the school board and council, and, and the public as well, have an opportunity to ask questions and we provided responses. And I might suggest, when you talk about future meetings and topics, that might be something worthy, maybe not the whole group, a subset of this group can work on, just the logistics of that forum, to make sure that we're thinking it through, with the venues right, the right people are there, so it can actually be a productive session. And the final piece I'll allude to is at the back end, in the school budget validation vote. In modern times, since the advent of this validation vote, it's been five or six years now since we've been doing this, that really drives our process timeline in many respects. Because if history suggests anything, we should provide for the possibility of a second time having to go to the voters, should you fail the first. And on occasions, we've had to go three times. So, I must admit, this June 9th date is, is late, and it makes me a bit uncomfortable. It, it essentially gives us one date to probably fall back to, should a second vote be required. But it really doesn't give us, I, I don't think any opportunity for a third vote, again, should it be required. And I guess my concern is heightened this year, just because we're, the state's budget is in process, and the last time, two years ago, it was late June before they finalized it, and it impacted us. So, I think we can anticipate that everything will be compressed to mid to late June in any way. So, I, I flag that, and there may be the potential of moving that up to the, to May 26, and in doing so, gain a, a week.
What's the span of time between, the shortest possible span of time between votes?
Two weeks.
It could be less than two weeks. I can bring Toady in, she can tell you the particulars. The complaint we've heard is, a quick turnaround doesn't allow much time for the public to , one, know about the special election and to stay educated about it. I honestly don't know how to avoid that, given the kind of requirements this validation imposes on us. I think that's always going to be a complaint of the process.
I would like to point out though, if we do miss the deadline, it's not catastrophic. It's not like all budgets stop, we just revert back to the previous year until we get it corrected, so it's not like our, our organizations will stop, ceasing to function or anything like that. I agree with you that it's, it's, you want to have that cushion, but if we do miss that deadline, I'd rather have it the way that it is, only because we should have more information, I hope by then. And I, I'd like to avoid putting something out there and then have the state come in late, change it or do whatever they do, and then have to go back, like if last year, we had to go back a second time, and we got more money back two years, or two, right? Two years ago, yeah. So, so I, I mean, I, I think we can find that balance. I'm not worried that if we, we have to have that last date be before the deadline, you know what I mean? Because if, if we don't make that, the goal, first time around, if we, if we, if we can accomplish what we want to accomplish with this group and our, our two organizations, we'll go first time through.
Can, Tom, can you identify what prejudice results from going beyond July 1st?
I mean, the charter provides for that. It has a mechanism in the event the budget's not approved before the end of the fiscal year. I just think it's a complicating factor. I would expect you'd continue to work and fairly quickly have one in place. I'm not aware that it's happened in modern history, and I, it, it probably ought to be avoided, but it's not catastrophic.
And it does happen routinely in other districts.
Yeah, that's why I'd rather go late and get as much information as possible, for the certainty of people voting on this. And then be able to still provide enough time between votes, so that we don't feel like people don't know what's going on.
And stay positive that in the past, first time, because everybody's concerns and questions have been answered, everybody understands the big rule.
As long as it's not prejudicial in any great terrific way.
I think it, it positively presupposes that this change that we're going through, and the way that we're working together, is going to allow the public to be better informed, and to be, have a better sense of, of the direction that they want to take to town. The, the second piece that would speak to the positive side of this, is that it is, that would typically, that first, that second Tuesday in June would typically be reserved for election, though there's nothing on the ballot, is that correct, Tom?
No, no primary.
But, but in the event that it were to be scheduled, it would be scheduled on that date, so there's a, there's a cost factor. And the third is, if it were to be on the 26th, it would be people coming right back from the Memorial Day holiday into a voting day, which has, which the board and the council have just done their second reading, in other, in other words, adopted the budget on the 20th and 21st. And there's, the, the only thing between that and voting is the Memorial Day holiday. And I think that there has been concern before, that there was not enough process and/or communication or clarification time between having the budget and, and.
Because the newspapers would not be able to report.
June 2 would be, you know, the middle date you could look to, to.
Because they got to print on the 19th.
Yeah.
So they wouldn't even report.
But then on the 28th, 21st, just they're not going to get reported.
So, hearing all that makes perfect sense, June 2 would be, you know, the only other date, the earlier date you could consider following. The other point I would just note, this schedule suggests the council takes final action on the budget May 20, the regular meeting, and the school board would take final action the day after. Traditionally, and I don't think it has to be this way, the school board's taken final action on their school budget before the council's taken final action on the overall budget. But to the extent that the council's action changes their bottom line number, which it almost always does, they often have to then have another meeting and deal with whatever the council handed them. So I, I think having this sequence makes more sense, and not that your budget process and approval of your budget isn't important, what really matters in terms of the adoption process and the validation process, is what the town council does.
So May 20th is the day that the town council sets the number for the referendum vote?
Yes.
Yeah, but, Tom, just to, just to piggyback on what you said, you'll, you'll notice however, that on the 13th, we also scheduled in one of these meetings between the school board and the town council, presuming that, at that point in time, we've pretty much got all of our numbers, and if there are things that really need to be ironed out, it should be done in, in that sort of setting, of really working together and sort of coming, and coming up with a, presumably at some level of compromise or some understanding, so that although the board now sort of forfeits having the last, the last word on their budget, even before the town council gets a hold of it, I think that, again, it's a positive presumption that the way that we're doing business differently is going to result with a different outcome. And just in the event that it hasn't, by the 13th, everybody's kind of locked in together to try to do some problem solving, and, and make good on some of those norms that we've set here.
Is that making sense to folks?
Yep.
This doesn't attempt to identify joint meetings of the two finance committees?
No. No, I think that, that May 13 date, George just pointed to, is intended to be a full town council.
Full board.
No, there are multiple opportunities that this group ought to talk about, how to carry and work on outside of the schedule.
And we, Tom and I have made note of that, because you're looking at two months, really, February and March, that offer themselves for joint meetings of the finance committee. So, once the, once you decide on whatever the next agenda item is, one of, one of the agenda items, either for this group or a subgroup, really needs to be, how is that, how is that, that town meeting?
Yes.
Set up? How is that going to work? What time is that going to happen? Where is it going to be? Are we going to have a moderator, et cetera? So, I, I think that there's, there's probably, that certainly is one of the agenda items that this week should probably settle on.
And I was actually going to recommend that maybe we take action to form a subcommittee to tackle that, if everyone's agreeable to start forming that, and finding the resources, you know, whether it's the location, a facilitator, and whatever else we might need.
Thanks, good.
So, have we moved past this? Is everyone generally fine with this? We can save it up and, and distribute it to our collective groups, and maybe get some further feedback, but it, it certainly is in keeping with the charter partners and timelines. And I think I've spoken to, so long as the council's fine, is having the presentation done at a workshop before the regular meeting on the 1st. And we just recognize that we're limiting our chances on the back end later in June, just depending on how the vote goes and how the state budget goes. That's going to be something to deal with. So with that, Chairman, I guess we'll turn it back to you for did you mean date, time, and maybe the agenda items?
So, since we're on this, on the schedule, to Donna's previous comment, I wanted to address, and that was on the, the routine process of sharing meeting outcomes. I'd just say, you know, Donna, at least for the council, I consider it a responsibility of myself, as the chair of the finance committee for our group, to communicate that information. So I want you to know that this and everything else will be shared, and maybe Chris can do the same for you as part of his finance committee report, without having to create a really lengthy process. I don't, I think it's a fairly simple communication piece, so I'll definitely share this, along with the norms. If, if it's okay with everyone, even though technically it's not on the agenda, I'd like to get the group's approval to form the subcommittee, and. Sean, I just, so I have to, I just to go back to the, the report, I think it would be nice if we could have whoever's keeping minutes, have those typed up, and we could at least distribute them to the respective boards.
Yeah, I, I would like, I'd love to be on your distribution list for finance committee minutes. That way, and I would think you guys might, I don't know if you're interested in being on our distribution, but, but that way, at least I understand some of your, the language and, and focus, and it's just part of, to, for me to understand where you're at, I need to get closer. Not that I'm interested in intruding myself into it, but I don't, I won't be able to fully appreciate what you're saying, in all cases, if I were not.
So, if we can, maybe we, if there's consensus, we can add all of the school board finance committee members to our distribution list for finance committee, and then also, if you could add us to yours, I think that would be, just a sharing of information, to keep us all informed. So on the, on the issue of the committee, forming the subcommittee, Chris, do you and I want to maybe take a lead on that?
Yes.
Unless there's someone else that wants to do it?
Unless, yeah.
Bill, you said you're retired, would you like to do it?
If you want to, if you want to be honest with it, that's fine.
Can I have that sense of humor? Come on, Bill.
I'm not listening.
So Bill, if you can take the lead for me, I'm kind of booked as it is.
That's fine.
That'd be great.
I'll work with you.
Yes. And this is to.
Spread the wealth a little bit here.
This is to work on the.
Town hall.
Town hall, uh, style meeting.
I think George and I need to be a part of that as well.
Right. The four of us, I think, would be agree.
And then, and then we'll bring Donna and Jessica into the fold as the leaders of both groups.
Well, we're certainly report back to this group, hopefully at the next meeting, and we'll have some initial reports or thoughts, and your feedback.
And let, Tom, unless you have an objection, I, I like that electronic format that you have for scheduling meetings, that seems to be very effective. I mean, we've never used it.
Beautiful. I'd like you to be the one administering it.
Yeah, well. Sure. And that, that gives me options in my scheduling and planning, that helps me quite a bit, but if it's, if it's too cumbersome, we can, we can.
No, no, certainly not. So on that point, I presume that this group will want to continue meeting through February and so in March, perhaps, and doesn't need to stop then either. But should I float some dates out over those 60 days or so, just so we start to kind of get new dates, then we can talk about topics and agendas, have a full of meetings?
I mean, it might, it might not be a bad idea, I don't know if we, if we want to set a time and decide are we going to meet once a month, or try and get twice a month, or what the frequency is going to be. I mean, right now, we're still kind of in the beginning of it, and it's not a lot of substance, really.
Right, there isn't a lot of substance, there will be for.
For at least a couple, a month or a month and a half or so.
For probably six weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the agenda items, that's going to drive, I think, but maybe you have to meet.
I don't know, it depends what you want, what, what topics you want to talk about. You know, it, it could be, and I might suggest that it would be a good topic, per rumor that maybe a CFP proposal to do technology advancement at high school level, that's a big meaty topic, that it'd be great to kind of get out there. Seems to me this group would be a great one to be, to consume that information and for publicity here and those sorts of things. So, there's probably stuff we can do nearer term.
That's true.
Well, so I, I, I'll propose, you know, a handful of dates, and we'll look to finalize maybe two or three dates over the next 60 days, just so we get them on our calendars, and we can.
And for the next 60 days, if we're going to meet on a couple of occasions or more, maybe you and George could talk about what, what are those important issues that are worthy of discussion, so that we have some consideration.
Well, we would also like to make this relevant to you, so we'd like your input, what you want to talk about.
Right, yeah. And I presume that we would give you any ideas that, and.
I think if, I like the idea if you can put out a bunch of dates, and let's see what the, everyone's availability is, over the next 30 and 60 days. I think that, personally, I think in February, you probably could get away with just one meeting. But then starting in March, we'd want to ramp that up. And the reason is, one, is I think that by February, we should be able to hopefully finalize what are the, not the boundaries, but what are the components of the town hall meeting? We'll know more about that, so we can finalize it and then communicate it to the town council and the school board as a whole. And that, the second meeting in February, or maybe even the first meeting in March, because I would hope that we would have quite a bit of lead time with publicity and getting the news out there to the public and the schools, and, you know, whatever the venues might be. So, and then maybe what, Chris, you and I can do, is that once we get the dates in place and the topics from everyone, we can then, you and I can put together an agenda for each of those workshop meetings that we have, with the help of George and Tom. And I think it, to Bill's point too, is if we're sharing meeting minutes too, I mean, we've got regularly scheduled finance committees, that could generate a Q and A session, and we'd keep that a permanent part of the agenda, where we say the last thing is questions and answers for back and forth for those two groups or something. And, and, because I, for me, my preference is that we actually are setting an agenda and the topics, at least two meetings in advance, or one and a half. That way, you kind of have time to do the research, time to get information, it's not just, Cam told two days before the meeting that the topic's going to be capital projects and facilities. So, I think that would be a good timeline.
Is it worth, perhaps going around the table to see, to get some topic ideas, just to see if we can start to focus on that? Some of the stuff is, I hate some leave time.
I think that'd be great. Technology advancement at the school system, particularly nine through 12. Absolutely.
Any other ideas? Well, I think that, we kind of build on it, you know, we had tried to identify cost drivers as things that were going to, so if anything that we know might be an unusual cost driver, getting.
That deserves a lengthier discussion, some education and background, and that, I think is important. think, is important. Tom stands.
And I guess maybe to the flip side of that, too, if we're, if we're going to be discussing things, we're going, I'd like to know what you guys have on your agenda. I mean, if you guys, if there's a major issue coming up, a major capital improvement, that you guys have to really focus on the issue, I'd like to know that from our side, so that we, we know kind of where you guys are positioned, and where you're, where you're, where you're thinking, and what you're.
Yeah, exactly. I think, you know, from a greater municipal point of view, what are our priorities?
Right.
Are there some things that, for whatever reason, have now come together and really are more compelling than they might have been otherwise? Or have been passed over for years, but they're substantial.
Well, just to be back on what you were saying, you might want to be aware that tonight for the school board meeting on the agenda is going to be kind of a, like, look at where we stand in this town in terms of technology. If we're able to catch that, we'll be typing that over at the library tonight, not here. And if you're able to catch that, or you catch it in the future, that would be a good piece for you to be able to inform yourself within advance. And my other thought is around new initiatives that are coming down on school systems as requirements by the state, that have huge impacts, either in terms of time or money, that may be of worth for you, as well as the community at large.
I'd recommend it, so.
And it may not be just stuff that we know is coming this budget cycle, we've got a pretty long list of things that we know are on the horizon, it's just a question of whether they hit now, later, or they may even keep getting pushed out, a few things have been pushed out, but we still have to be aware that they're out there, potentially impacting us.
Particularly, just one thing, particularly because even though they might get pushed out, the work needs to happen right now.
Right.
And it impacts our staff right now, for that future date.
I think there should be a balance in the, in the information, so technology isn't just an educational or a school issue, technology throughout the community, whether it's the public safety building, town hall, public works department, you know, whatever those other areas are, should be included, so that we have a full perspective of the technology in the town, and the impact that it has, even though we know that the school. When I said the technology, it's not just about the Wi-Fi or upgrades, it's about the educational plan and the whole 9 through 12 issue, so it's a little bit bigger. But, the other piece I wanted to mention on the town side, was that there was some comments or questions about energy, I can't think of the right word, either energy efficiency, or, you know, maybe converting our automobiles to energy-driven type of, alternative energy types of vehicles, you know, whether it's turning the town hall into green, a green building, and using solar paneling, things such as that, there was some new initiative discussions about that. That's something that we're truly looking at going forward, probably not in this budget cycle, but in the future, it might be a good topic. I think it was Peter, you had some interest in that, I don't know if he still, it would be a good topic.
The only thing I just want to flag is that, you know, staff is very quickly can be fully immersed in budget preparation, because I mean, it's a huge preoccupation, and it could be for us, so some of these things, I'm not sure if we can have time, nor is it necessary that we have some of the conversations in advance for our budget, unless it's, you know, part of the budget. These are things that, and hopefully this relationship continues beyond, if it's part of the intent, these are things that we can take on, upon, you know, lumped together, I suppose.
Yeah, and I don't expect us to resolve all the technology questions during the first meeting, I think it's just kind of giving each other a heads up of, these are things that are coming that are going to be major factors moving forward. I know we won't be ready to present you with detailed information of how we're going to execute, and what it's going to cost, and all that stuff, but we'll at least, you know, it's, it's, it's part of our process of organizing priorities and things like that on our end, so if you know that you're not surprised, in April, or in March or April, when we sit down and go, okay, now we've got this portion of CIP, and it's not a surprise. You're like, yep, we've talked about that, now let's start talking about the details of it a little bit more, how are we going to fund it, how are we going to approach it, what's our execution plan, that kind of stuff. At least you guys will know that that's, it's on, it's out there, it's coming.
It just occurred to me, we don't really have to look any further than the strategies we just reviewed at the top end of this. I mean, cost drivers is one, discussing new initiatives is another one, these are things presumably that have direct budget impact in the near term. So, I think we probably have a basic framework and template for the next two or three meetings, just a matter of fitting them in.
And that's great, you've kind of divided two things that are impacting the budget we talk about, you know, now, and things that are longer range, maybe that comes after the budget season, as we continue to meet and talk, and how to start working toward the next year.
I was hoping we could hold a meeting at Wentworth School. I've never been in it, and I'd love to be able to combine.
You don't need an excuse, you know, you can come in anytime.
Yeah, but I want, but I, but I don't want to be wandering the halls, I'd rather.
Or they'll lock you down. George, George will know where you are, don't worry.
I'd be happy to give you a tour, if you just, just give Kelly a call, I'd, I'd be, I'm there very regularly, so.
Okay. Which, which meeting were you suggesting?
Well, just a meeting of ourselves, but I just think there are other town council members who should know more about our newest large capital investment.
Maybe that's where your town hall forum is helping, if we're going to have a meeting.
That would be a good idea.
Yeah. Yeah, there's.
Excellent.
Yeah, let's get more people in so they know what we've done.
Well, the door's open, let's go, let's go.
Good, all right, good, that's nice to hear.
Yeah, you know, I don't think you need an excuse, just, I mean, obviously, you know, we got to schedule it and make sure that you're.
Don't want to scare the kids.
Yeah. No, that's why they keep us, they keep me upstairs all day.
Got high room in the halls, got white hair. So, it sounds like that we have kind of put our hands around the future meeting, Tom's going to set out a doodle, or whatever that was called, to set up a date, a time preference, and then we pretty much have a template for the topics regarding our agenda items, and, you know, Chris and I will keep communicating and setting the agenda for that next meeting, as well as when it is. And then our goal is also for us, our go-away, our outcome, is that we will take back this information, the respective chairs will take back the information and share it with their respective boards, as has been shared, and we'll do that on a regular basis. Anything else for the good of the order, good of the group, before we close?
Just while everyone's assembled, is there, I propose anything from first thing in the morning, to early afternoon, to late afternoon, to the end, is there, I don't wish to time or propose dates or times of days that just don't work for people, but, any big objections to a variety of dates, you guys?
I'm open.
Good.
Yeah, my, my only challenge is usually a Tuesday morning is difficult for me, I'm a regularly scheduled conference call, but I can, I can be flexible if I have to be.
We share our Tuesday mornings, if you do.
No, it's on the 1st of March.
Good for you.
Anything else?
So, before closing, I'd like to also have a couple of minutes, if anybody from the public side would like to speak, you're welcome to stand up, if you can mention your name and address, for the record, that'd be great.
Mike Turick, 11 Bayberry Lane. Mike Turick, 11 Bayberry Lane. Is this being televised? Because there are people that I know of that are interested in watching these joint meetings, and then the question becomes, how are you going to televise it from Wentworth School?
These meetings aren't being televised, yes, and we'll have to sort that out. But, I think the intent, I'm sure, for the town hall forum is to be fully televised, so.
There's a mechanism in place, because we're, I mean, we're at the library tonight, that's going to be recorded and taped, and they, they do a tape delay broadcast.
That answers it. Thank you much.
I'm sure we can make an arrangement with that, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll take a motion to adjourn. I heard a second out there, so all in favor?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.